Just a reminder for folks to anticipate on the agenda to make sure that you unmute and turn on your video during the roll call at the beginning of the meeting.
Mayor, we're ready to go.
Thank you. All right. Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of Burlington City Council. Today is Tuesday, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Due to the continuing coronavirus pandemic, this meeting is again being held via the Zoom platform. And will be livestreamed on the city of Burlington's YouTube page at youtube.com slash C O B N C. Please note this meeting is being recorded. For tonight's public comments and a public hearing to address city council during the meeting at the appropriate time, we ask that you use the raise hand feature in Zoom or star nine if you're joining us via phone. At the appropriate time, our staff will call on you that you wish to speak. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Baltutus, and I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. Members present when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
Very good. Staff participants and presenters, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City manager Harden Watkins.
Here.
City attorney David Huffman.
Here.
interim city clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Assistant city manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Interim assistant city manager Cheryl Brown.
Here.
Director of Finance and Risk Management Peggy Reese.
Here.
Recreation Parks Director Tony Laws.
Here.
City engineer Todd Lambert.
Here.
Recreation Park Special Event Supervisor Emily Crowley.
Here.
Public information specialist John Vernon.
Here.
Very good. Appreciate everyone. If you have any technical difficulties this evening, we are asking that you contact John Vernon at three, three, six, five, one, three, five, four, four, zero. For tonight's invocation, we call on council member Jim Butler.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for our many blessings and for another evening to work on behalf of our city. Lord, please provide us clarity, not just to see problems or issues, but rather to see with a positive light the many wonderful opportunities that we have before us. Sometimes the task seems large, Lord, and complex, but with your wisdom and guidance, all things are possible and and the obstacles are removed. Lord, we ask that you keep us safe, protect us, protect our citizens, our business owners, our city staff. Lord, protect all from the perils of COVID nineteen. This virus has created hardship to many. Lord, it's created fear to some and controversy across our country. Give us strength and perseverance to make the proper decisions and may your all powerful and healing hand remove this issue from our lives. As our children start back to school, Lord, we ask for their safety, both in physical health and in mental health. As they too have to deal with the disruptions of COVID nineteen. Give our students comfort and our teachers patience as the process of educating has been altered in so many ways. God, please shower your blessings upon our city. May we help one another, love one another, may we become more united as we work on the challenges that are before us. Give this council your guidance and with knowledge and wisdom from above that the decisions we make will be proper. Thought out and researched for the betterment of Burlington. In your name I pray. Amen.
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 At this time, we recognize our interim city clerk Beverly Smith.
You, members of council, is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
Before council, our minutes from our May eighteenth city council meeting, our June first city council meeting, our June fourteenth work session, our June fifteenth city council meeting, and our June seventeenth continued city council meeting. Do I hear a motion and second to approve these minutes?
Second.
Motion to approve by council member Ward, seconded by council member Owen. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed without to myself and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen.
Mayor, if I could just, could I make one comment? That's five different meetings in terms of minutes being prepared and submitted. I want to say a special thank you to all the people involved in doing that. I know obviously Ms. Smith is responsible for much of this, but certainly takes a team effort and it's that's a that's a significant amount of work to put together and present these minutes in a correct manner.
Thank you, Councilmember Owen.
All right, next we have additions to our consent agenda. We have quite a few of them. It's item E, Transo Services, Inc. Amendment number four, budget amendment twenty twenty-two dash four. Item F, Anthony Road Landfill Change Order number one and Budget Amendment twenty twenty-two dash five. Item G, ARPA Grant Fund Ordinance Amendment, Budget Amendment twenty twenty-two dash seven. Item H, P T R C Salary Study, and item I, Fitness Equipment Replacement for City Park National Fitness Campaign. And item J, Cancellation of the September seventh, two thousand and twenty-one city council meeting. Do I hear a motion and second regarding approving these items?
Make a motion that we approve the add-ons items F through J as requested.
Do I hear a second?
Or he.
Yeah.
I can.
All right, motion to approve made by council member Butler, seconded by council member Ward. Any questions regarding the motion to approve?
No, just to clarify, it's items E through J. I'm sorry.
E through J. Very good. All right, all those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed without to myself, council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is the adoption of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda with the additions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adopt the agenda made by council member Owen, seconded by council member Butler. Any questions regarding the motion to adopt the agenda? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed without to myself, council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about them, please let us know. Item A, to approve a reclassification of a travel Traffic Signal System Technician Level One to a Traffic Signal Systems Technician Level Two effective upon city council approval. Item B, to temporarily close the following streets in downtown Burlington for B-Town Events, seventy-fourth Annual Christmas Parade on Saturday, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, from seven AM until twelve noon at the following locations, as locations are spelled out in the details of your agenda. Item C, to temporarily close the following streets in downtown Burlington for B-Town Events, Holiday Magic on Saturday, September, December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. During the specified times, the following locations are spelled out in your agenda. Item D, to approve Budget Amendment twenty twenty-two dash six for donations and grants received for use by animal services for expenses related to medical supplies for the spay and neuter of shelter pets. Item E, to authorize the city manager to execute Amendment Number Four with Transdev Services, Inc. to increase frontline employee wages and approve Budget Amendment twenty twenty-two dash four Public Transportation Fund. Item F, to approve Change Order Number One to Contract Agreement Between the City of Burlington and S and M E, Inc. and approve Budget Amendment twenty twenty-two dash five for Phase Two of the Anthony Road Landfill Pre-regulatory Landfill Assessment Study. Item G, to approve Budget Amendment twenty twenty-two dash seven to amend the American Rescue Plan Act Grant Fund Ordinance. Item H, to authorize the city manager to engage P T R C for a salary study for Burlington Police Department sworn staff and communication staff. Item I, to approve the replacement of existing fitness equipment at the Burlington City Park via the National Fitness Campaign Grant Program. Item J, to cancel the September seventh, two thousand and twenty-one city council meeting. Do I hear a motion and second to approve the foregoing consent agenda items?
A move.
Second.
Motion to approve made by council member Ward, seconded by council member Butler. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed without to myself, council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. We have one public hearing scheduled this evening. A public hearing has been set to consider adopting a resolution and order to permanently close the unopened right-of-way from Kirkpatrick Road to the end and of being the opposite of Sacon Drive. This time, I'd like to recognize our city engineer Todd Lambert. Welcome, Todd.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight Engineering is presenting this request from Montgomery Assets to permanently abandon the right-of-way. This is an unopened right-of-way. It's off of Sacon Drive, just across from, I mean, on Kirkpatrick, just across from Sacon. The right-of-way was originally platted in nineteen sixty-two. It has never been opened. It is currently served as a driveway that serves both the property adjacent to it. But those properties also front on Kirkpatrick Road. And if you give me a minute, let me share my screen to so we can all be looking at the same items. Let me know if that's visible for everyone.
We can see that, Todd.
Right, so the right-of-way being requested to abandon is highlighted here in red. Just for purposes, this is Kirkpatrick there where it comes into Long Pine. The adjacent properties is served by AMRC, which owns the properties to the south and to the west. And the property owned by Montgomery Assets is actually the old Shays Restaurant, which has changed to a couple of different businesses over the years, but they are looking to redevelop this track and the tracks along to the north back to Long Pine. And the right-of-way request abandonment is just to facilitate that development to give them a setback from a side property line instead of a setback from a street right-of-way that doesn't really exist. So this is something that engineering certainly supports from a staff perspective. There is a sewer line that runs that serves these buildings. General statute allows us to retain a sewer easement just like we would any other place. So engineering does not see any issues with the request as far as the location of the existing sewer line. General statute, you adopted, you followed the general statutes and adopted the intent of resolution. Now, following the public hearing, if council sees fit, engineering would support the adoption of the resolution to permanently close this right-of-way. The property owners have been in contact with AMRC. They are all in support of this. We have not heard anybody contact the engineering office for any questions in the matter whatsoever. So if you have any questions of engineering staff, I'd be happy to address them.
Any questions from council? All right, didn't sound like any questions, so with that, we will move to the public hearing. This is a public hearing, and so if anyone in attendance wishes to speak regarding this item on our agenda, we ask that you use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if joining us via phone. If you're having any technical or connection difficulties, you can contact John Vernon at three, three, six, five, one, three, five, four, four, zero. And we'll give folks just a moment to alert us if they do wish to speak regarding this public hearing item. I do also want to note while we're waiting for folks to chime in that per memo from our city attorney, we had previously been doing continuations of our public hearings for a period of forty-eight hours. And that is no longer necessary per his guidance, so this public hearing can be closed and a motion made in tonight's meeting. Looks like no requests for comment from our phone and our Zoom attendees. So with that, do I hear a motion to close public hearing from council?
So moved.
Next. Motion to close made by council member Owen, seconded by council member Butler. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed without to myself, council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Do I hear a motion regarding this item on the agenda?
So moved.
Bob, is that an approval?
That's to permanently close the unopened right-of-way from Kirkpatrick Road to the end of being opposite of Sacon Drive. How's that?
Much better.
Oh, thank you.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion as stated by council member Ward to approve the permanently closure and abandonment of the right-of-way. Seconded by council member Owen. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed without to myself, council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on.
Mayor, it went, but Todd, with that, those properties put together, what acreage is would that track potentially be? You know?
Give me just a second, I can tell you.
While Todd's pulling that up, I do just want to note that there were no written comments received on the item either.
So the four tracks put together is approximately two point seven acres.
It's a nice track of land.
With that, we have three items of new business this evening. We'll begin with item two on our agenda. City council will consider temporarily closing the following streets on September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, from nine AM until twelve noon during the annual Walk to End Alzheimer's fundraiser special event hosted by the Alzheimer's Association, continue upon meeting contingent upon meeting requirements of special events application process. Those streets to be closed are East Front Street from South Spring Street to South Worth Street and South Main Street from East Front Street to Davis Street. This time, we recognize our Recreation and Parks Special Event Supervisor Emily Crowley.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. The Alzheimer's Association is excited to be back in person this year. They did continue with a virtual walk last year. And they've got some new event coordinators, but they are one of the largest walks that we have as part of our permitting process here in Burlington. Kelly Hurley and Lindsay Golden are on the call this evening. If there are any questions about the closure or the walk itself.
Very good. Kelly, Lindsay, anything you want to add before we address any council comments?
We are looking forward to being back in Burlington and engaging with all of our local businesses downtown around the time of the walk and hope some of you will join us in there in person.
I agree. It's nice to be here and we hope to see you all engage with us. And if you are interested in professionally or personally, let us know and we'll look for a way to deepen this relationship.
Very good, thank you. Any questions from council members regarding this request? All right. Do I hear a motion regarding this street closure request?
Mayor, make a motion that we approve the temporary street closing request contingent upon meeting all requirements of the special events application permit process.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to approve the street closure request made by council member Butler, seconded by council member Ward. Any questions from council regarding this motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed without to myself, council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. To Kelly and Lindsay, we appreciate y'all continuing to help bring this event to downtown and we wish you good weather and a high turnout and a successful event. So thank you for your dedication to our community and to the work of ending Alzheimer's.
Thank you.
With that, we will move on to item three on our agenda and welcome. Emily, back. City council will consider a request to allow a vendor to serve beer and wine in the designated area at the Burlington City Park during the Embers Concert on Friday, August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, being held outdoors at the Jimmy Combs Amphitheater. Welcome back, Emily.
Thank you, Mayor. We're continuing to adapt events as, you know, the world changes. This event was scheduled to be at the Paramount Theater. And from advice by the COVID Advisory Committee, we've moved the concert outdoors. And so what we're really trying to do is just provide the same experience to our ticket buyers that we would have provided at the theater. We did have Burlington Beer Work scheduled to serve alcohol for that concert, and we would like to continue that on at City Park. Just like we do at the Carousel Festival and we have the Beer Garden, there will be fencing or stanchions around the stage. And we will have staff ensuring that that doesn't leave the area. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but this is a special circumstance, just trying to provide that same concert experience that we would have had at the theater at our park stage.
Very good. Thank you, Emily. Is this, I know there's a series of concerts and events that were scheduled in the Paramount. Is the intention that if this is successful in this format and events still need to be held outdoors that for future requests will be made as well?
It's possible. I think it's a lot easier for concerts to be held outside than some of the theater productions that have a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff going on and lots of folks involved. So we're still trying to work through those kinks and I'm going to work with the COVID Advisory Committee to seek some more guidance on possibly just limiting seats and spacing folks out, requiring masks indoors. This concert was sold before the mask mandate in the city, and so we were a little worried too that folks wouldn't have been excited about wearing a mask indoors when they purchased their tickets when they didn't have to. So we're happy to have it outside and we're looking forward to some good weather.
Good. Any questions from council regarding the item?
Is the weather a responsibility of Tony or is that your responsibility?
I don't wish that responsibility on anyone. It's the one thing we always say as event coordinators, we cannot control, but it brings us the most stress and anxiety, and so I will only look at it a hundred times before Friday.
Jim, did you have a question?
Just would we, would we be expanding ticket sales or anything by moving it or just going to stick with what you have?
Yeah, we are still selling tickets for the concert.
Okay.
We've got plenty of space outside, plenty of room for dancing.
We need a shameless plug-in for that as well.
Emily, where can people buy tickets?
They can buy tickets at ETIX. That's our online platform. They can buy tickets at the Paramount Box Office, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from twelve to three. Or they can buy them by coming to the concert on Friday night at eight o'clock at Burlington City Park. Cash is preferred. They will be twenty-dollar tickets at the door, eighteen ahead of time.
Very good. Awesome. This is also a great opportunity for folks to experience the brand-new restroom facility courtesy of C D B G grant money and investment in the area around the Jimmy Combs Amphitheater. Now, that's a request that a lot of residents made and a very outdated facility, and it's now beautiful. So we hope folks enjoy those restroom facilities. Any other questions from council? Do I hear a motion to approve this request to serve beer and wine?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the request to serve beer and wine in a designated area at Burlington City Park during the Embers Concert on Friday, August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, contingent upon meeting all requirements as requested.
Second.
Motion to approve made by council member Owen, seconded by council member Butler. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised. All those opposed, motion is passed without to myself, council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you, Emily. We appreciate your work on this.
Thank you all.
All right, this moves us to item four on our agenda. City council will consider a slate of appointments to the advisory boards and commissions. At this time, we'll recognize public information specialist John Vernon.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As you're aware, during our regular board and appointment period in June, we were several applicants short for the number of vacancies on a few of the city boards, advisory boards and commissions, particularly from the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. Since then, we've also had three members resign from their board, leaving us with twelve vacancies in total. We reached out to various professional organizations and promoted the vacancy through our various communication channels, and we now have ten additional applicants for the twelve seats. Some of the seats were alternate vacancies and will continue to try to fill those, but with this round of appointments, staff advisors are much less concerned with quorum issues. I recognize that these appointments were a moving target and information was changing as late as yesterday afternoon, so I will do my best to answer any questions you may have or clear up any confusion.
Good. Any questions from council regarding the applicants or the vacancies?
As provided to all council members via John Vernon, there's a slate of candidates proposed for these vacancies. I'm happy to read them into the record and then we can have any discussion on them. So the Board of Adjustment has two Burlington resident vacancies that expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. The proposal is to appoint Mark Kendy and Charles Beasley to those seats. We have one ETJ vacancy expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. The proposal is that Dean Rainey be appointed to that seat. And then we have two ETJ alternate vacancies that expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Having not enough candidates, we only have one proposal there, and that's Steven Heineman. On the Planning and Zoning Commission, we have one ETJ vacancy expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. The proposal is to appoint Joan Nelson there. And then we have two ETJ alternate vacancies expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Again, not having enough applicants, we have only one appointment there, and that's Ethan Raynor. And then on a traffic commission, we have one vacancy expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four with a proposal to appoint Valencia Reed and one vacancy expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. And the proposal is to appoint Reed Sartan. We have one remaining vacancy expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, which will remain unfilled. And then we have our Tree and Appearance Commission with one vacancy expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. And that proposal is to appoint Julia Brown into that seat. Councilmembers, any questions regarding those requested appointments?
I will add that I'm speaking with council member Owen yesterday. I missed that there is also a Mr. Howard who would be available to fill the remaining traffic commission vacancy if council chooses.
Very good. Counsel, any objection to Michael Howard filling that traffic commission vacancy? All right, so Michael Howard will be added to the traffic commission vacancy expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. And that will fill our traffic commission vacancies. Leaving just one vacancy on Board of Adjustment and one on Planning and Zoning Commission, both for alternate positions. So, any questions remaining on that?
Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment to thank John and Morgan for their work with putting the information out and putting the applicants together for these boards and commissions. It's it's always a complicated process, but during the pandemic, I'm sure it's become even more complicated. And also thank the people who have stepped up to to be part of our team in terms of being board members. And they're extremely important to the city and to how we go forth and making policy and making operational decisions. So thanks to everyone who who have indeed stepped up and signed up for these board vacancies.
Definitely. We are indeed blessed as a community to have residents who step up to serve in these board and commission roles. It's a wonderful way for folks to help shape and guide our city as we move forward. And as mentioned this evening, we do have some remaining vacancies, so if anyone continues to be interested for these boards and commissions, applications are always being accepted online. Even though we normally appoint in the spring of the year, vacancies do come up periodically. And so folks are encouraged to submit their applications anytime they're interested. And your one application can be checkbox for multiple boards and commissions if your interests span multiple areas. All right, as read in, without any objections to that, do I hear a motion to approve that slate of board and commission appointments?
Make that motion to approve the slate as read.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to approve from council member Ward, seconded by council member Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed without to myself, council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. That concludes our regular agenda this evening and moves us to our public comment period. As per our normal policy, public comments regarding items not on our agenda can be submitted at this time. If anyone joining us via Zoom wishes to speak, please use the raise hand feature or star nine if joining us by phone. We'll take just a moment to let folks chime in if they do wish to speak during our public comment period. I'm gonna call on our interim city clerk Beverly Smith to indicate if we've received any written public comments.
Thank you. There were no written comments received for this meeting. We did receive several comments in reference to a rezoning request that's coming for a public hearing in September twenty-first. So those items have been provided to city council and we will put those in the record for that public hearing.
Very good. Again, if you're joining us and wish to speak, we ask that you use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine if you're joining us via phone. We'll give folks just another moment. All right, at this time, Michael Graves, if you would like to speak, please state your address for the public record.
Michael Graves, Burlington, North Carolina.
Michael, would you again like to chose to provide your full address to our city attorney after the meeting?
I sure will.
Thank you.
Two, well, two questions. One, what is the Burlington City Council stance on defunding the police? I know the mayor stood with individuals that wanted to defund the police and he had his little name tag on. So my thing is, was he representing the city council in the city of Burlington? When we're talking about defunding the police, I'm on the Alamo County Sheriff's Advisory Committee. And we get a lot of information on drugs and gangs in the community. I also know that right off the highway, several of the hotels that are on Maple Avenue have been used for drug activity. So if we're defunding the police, along with, I know one of the people running for council, Derona Warren, Big Low, whatever the last name is, has also advocated for defunding the police. So what is the council's stance on that? And is the mayor representing the council when he is with individuals that are basically asking to defund the police? And we had one of those individuals that the mayor was with that was arrested for trafficking drugs at one of those rallies and that he stood with. So again, is the mayor representing the council? And if they did a little research, when they find out that when you defund the police, the communities that they say they're trying to help are the communities that are hurt the worst. And if they did a little research, when they find out that when you defund the police, the communities that they say they're trying to help are the communities that are hurt the worst. When there's less police presence in minority communities. So if you do a little research, you will find that out. Next thing is, I am concerned about. You know, parts of East Burlington become the food desert. There are a lot of elderly people that can't get to the grocery store, people that's disabled can't get to the grocery store. I know that was a grocery store that was supposed to be coming to the corner of Graham Hope Dale and Church. And it moved across town. I would like to know what, you know, what happened with that. We do not have mass transit in Burlington. We have transit, transportation, but it's not mass. I know the mayor likes to claim that he brought that here, but he did not, and we don't have it anyway. It's not mass transit. So my thing is, if you don't have grocery stores in certain parts of the county, I said, excuse me, it becomes a food desert. So my thing is, what happened with the grocery store that was supposed to come in the corner of Graham Hope Dale and Church? And why did it move across town? You have three grocery stores. And in my poor health, I could walk to those grocery stores. And you have people in East Burlington that don't have a way to get to a grocery store. So, and I also know many moons ago, that strip mall that's on Rawhood Street, I had to put in a proposal to buy it. And I know that I had hired a person to get a anchor store in there, an anchor grocery store in there. And we had three stores that was put in the application or what had interest to move in that store. So you can get companies over there if you basically give incentives to these companies to do that. So my question is, what is the economic developer doing to try to get a grocery store in those areas? I know it can be done. Ten or fifteen years ago, we had that opportunity to do it. So that's a concern of mine, and I hope the council recognize is that when you have three stores that are just almost right on the top of each other, and you do not have a grocery store in a community where there are people who can't get to grocery stores. That's, that's the issue. So I would like to know what is the economic developer doing to try to get a grocery store over there? And I do understand also that you can't make grocery stores go over there. I do understand the pilgrimage that was going out of grocery stores that was over there. But you can give incentives, incentives for companies to go in there, and if you do, they will come. So what is being done to get grocery stores in that community so it doesn't become a food desert? And putting the Bojangles over there, non nutritious food is not what that community needs. Sure, it brings jobs, but it is not what the community needs over there. So what are we doing to get a grocery store over there? And why did the grocery store that was planned over there move to the other side of town? And what did we do? As from the city manager's office in the economic developer to try to persuade them not to go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael.
Mayor, if I could speak to the, I believe to what Mr. Graves is referring to was the property that crossed from Western Steakhouse. That was under contract by a local developer who at the, this time it was in two thousand thirteen, fourteen and into fifteen. And, and obviously one of the anchor tenants that was designed for that particular site was a grocery store. He's correct. Also, part of that concept of development would be a, would been a, a, a police substation to be potentially located in that particular development. The, there were some financial issues with the developer and the, that's when that project has went away. I think there's a new property owner now, and I'm speaking out of context here. Mr. Kirkman can probably help me here. But that indeed was, was looked at as a, a really nice shopping center area that would feature one of the local grocery stores that Mr. Graves is referring to. I'm gonna just go back to history on the one that I know you're referring to on Rawhood Street. That had, has changed hands several times. I, I, you know, I can't, I can't speak to that one in terms of, of why that store did not. Various people that was in it, I think it was, I don't recall the name of the actual companies that it was in that store. But I, I can't speak. And Bob, you were, you were heard then. I, I don't know if you recall specifically. You know, what the calls were. I know David Mania was really involved in that, that, that movement also to try to keep that grocery store open for the, for the residents in that community.
Harold, I don't recall all the details, but I think it was, I think it was a financial matter. Really, we had to do some research to get to the bottom of that, but I don't recall right off the top of my head.
But it's a valid question in terms of not having, you know, grocery stores where that people can get to them in a, in a, in a manner of convenience now. I, I don't know, and maybe no one can answer this or Mike either one. In reference to the access with, with linked transit, since we're now going to extended hours in a no fee structure. And also we have paratransit, how that should work with some of our residents who need public transit to get to these stores.
Yeah, I mean, I can speak to that. Of course, we have the purple route. Purple route serves the, the area that was the corner that's being discussed. Not only the fixed route goes by there, but if they live within three quarters of a mile of that route, they can go door to door. Anywhere Link Transit operates, same times and days that Link Transit operates. And that's also fare free as well. So you could ride the fixed route a bus, or you can do the paratransit, which is, you know, call, they'll pick you up, take you to your location. And bring you back, door to door service is what we provide for paratransit, and that's free, fare free as well.
Mike, those do have stops at both the Food Lion on North Church Street and the Walmart Supercenter there, which both have grocery selections. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, that's correct. The system, actually, one of the foundations of it, as you may recall, was services, employment and education. And by that, we serve just about all the grocery stores in Burlington.
Those routes also do meet at North Park where the city farmer's market is, and which has been assisted through partnerships with Healthy Aliments and City Burlington Impact Aliments.
Correct.
As well, correct?
Yes, sir.
You know, Mr. Graves brings up a great point about that, though, and to Harold's point, I think at the time. I think it was Lidl that was actually looking at that Herald if I, if I'm not mistaken, but they were always looking at two locations, one in that area and then one out. At one time, they were looking at University Drive. So they were always going to put two locations, so they didn't decide to relocate there. I think it was just the builder's insolvency and failure to meet contractual obligations that caused that to follow, fall through. But we have an interesting opportunity, and that's, you know, it's a conversation for another point, but we've got eleven and a half million dollars of ARPA funding that we've got to figure out what to do with. Once we get Treasury guidance and Peggy and her staff are real clear on how we can spend that money and where it can be allocated to. And, you know, I'd like for Mr. Huffman to maybe start doing a little research. I think there's two areas that we've talked about forever, and this goes back to when I first got elected in oh seven. And, and East Burlington and downtown, I've always said, I've always believed they need a catalyst project, but it takes significant funding to do that. And I believe that with this ARPA money, we now have funding that we can set aside for a catalyst project in those two locations that are very needy. And, you know, in my layman's mind, it would be as simple as an RFP to private developers that we would be willing to put X amount of dollars towards a project with a specific criteria in mind. And so that it stopped not just any project, but addressing a food desert may, could be one of those items in an RFP. If, if we pulled some of that money out and David researched how we could do that legally and without, you know, it being, if it's in a bid process through an RFP. The answer is in private development, that a private developer, that's the answer. But I do believe that there are some safeguards of financial backstop, so to speak. That if the city could provide, we could stimulate that and create a catalyst project in both of those areas, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't really cost the city anything out of our fund balance with this ARPA money. And I think that would be a great way to look at finally having the ability to put our money where our mouths are. And let's see if we can get that done. And, and like I said, that's a, that's a discussion for another day, but I would like to see us start looking into that to see if that could, could stimulate growth in both those areas.
And as I understand from, from working with the league on the ARPA money, there's still significant questions about utilization. But one thing that seems to be a consensus on is that the, the, the cities, the municipalities can certainly provide infrastructure for a project. And, and that's a, as, as everyone knows, and he's been doing this for the years, the infrastructure cost and getting a site prepared is a substantial cost that quite often is what really puts the private developer in, in a very difficult financial position. So if indeed something like that can be utilized, it very well might make it much more attractive to developers in this day and time to come forth and, and potentially, you know, look at this particular situation that we're discussing tonight. As an option for, for, for construction or development.
Yeah, and it's going to take private developers to do it. But I do believe that our responsibility would be a financial backstop for a significant project that could then perhaps we could, we could grow off of that. But to dovetail on Mr. Graves' other comments, the area's got to be safe. We, we need to, to really work on some of our crime statistics in, in, in those areas. And the area that Michael had referred to that Sheriff Johnson had made reference to as well. So, you know, for that reason, I, I think funding your police is paramount. And we've had two of those discussions. We had a presentation at work session last night. But I think that our BPD has laid out a very good case for how they can get themselves fully staffed and even create a task force to focus on some of these areas. And I said it last night, and I'll say it again tonight, if the grant doesn't go through, I think we need to look at it as a council to see what we need to do to give them all the tools they need to be able to police those areas. And, and to Mr. Graves' point, those are the areas that need it most. And so, Mr. Graves, that's where this councilman stands on it.
Well, and, and if you look at that situation with that we face, actually, I, I saw a website today, one of our former employees sent me only in our state that listed some cities that's having some real issues in terms of public safety issues, and we were one of those communities and specifically noted the area, I think you're talking about, Mr. Butler. It's a, it's going to take a group effort, not only, I'm convinced that our police department will, will step up and we will be able, if we go for it with what's been recommended in terms of staffing and, and also in terms of being competitive in, in terms of attracting people. Policemen's always, can always be a turnover in young police officers, we know that, but we still got to be, we got to be competitive there. But I think we also got to have to have a real effort to reach out to not only to our county in terms of the sheriff's department, also with state resources to, to make a dent in this challenging area we have that, whether it's just theft or gun violence or drug trafficking, a combination of all three, it's going to take a concerted effort to, I think, to, to make a, to clean that up. To where the citizens will feel comfortable in their own neighborhoods, which everybody, that's something, that's a basic service of what cities do. Is try to make, provide people who live in their jurisdiction, a safe environment where they feel comfortable. And that thinks something, that's something we cannot, not turn our head on and make sure we make every effort we can to do that, to accomplish that.
Absolutely. Do want to mention that our council has not had a discussion about defunding the police, but we have approved our budget for the current fiscal year as well as additional budget amendments regarding training, hiring, salary studies, all unanimously approved by our city council. I do want to note that we do have one additional public comment request. At this time, I'll call on Ms. Donna Van Hook. At this time, you may speak. If you could state your address for the public record, Ms. Van Hook.
Good evening, everyone. Donna Van Hook, three seventeen Caswell Street in Burlington. I just want to point out, since you are talking about policing, I want to make sure that people are aware that more policing in black neighborhoods is not the answer to reduce crime. On last month, there were, there was discussion about four different things from the board. I mean, from the city council, one was the cure violence, which was read, read by the mayor off a piece of paper. He brought that up in twenty eighteen. I was at the meeting and nothing has been done with that now. So I don't, I don't know what the significance of bringing up pure violence is at this point. There was talk about youth solutions. I was one of the facilitators for that in twenty eighteen. If it's not effective, what are we doing about that? This may sound like a series of questions, but I'm talking in terms of what was said at the last meeting and how gun violence is being talked about with no serious solutions for it. There was also discussion about the strategic plan for the Burlington Police Department. I know that there's a new chief at this time who has recently been hired. However, I was part of also the strategic plan that was in place under the former chief. So I was in some of that decision-making process. What I would like to say is, where are you all at definitely as a city council, a collective of members? As far as gun violence is, that's one part of what I want to say. Also, the mayor took a picture in front of construction for the new site for Bojangles. On last week, I believe it was, and there was a comment by a person who's running for city council, I believe, in Gibsonville said that we are working on a plan for the Western Electric Building. I would like to know what that plan is. Has it been talked about publicly? If so, please make reference to that. But I would like to know if it's not been talked about publicly, what's the secrecy about that? So two parts about the gun violence, comments made on last month's meeting. That was a lot of uncertainty by the city council. I'm not feeling confident in anything that was said on that day personally, for a person who participated in every one of the things that was, that was stated. Also, what are the plans for the Western Electric Building? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Hook.
Ms. Van Hook, it's a reference in, in last night. The interim chief Eric Kearns did a presentation for, for council in reference to, you mentioned both youth solutions and strategic plan going forward. Obviously, the youth solutions factor is something that we must be prepared to, to, to deal with because that can eliminate, hopefully it should, I'm not all, but that certainly can maybe eliminate some of this gun situation, or at least that some of our young people being put in a position that is not going to give them a chance to succeed in life. I do know that's part of the, of the presentation last night from Mr. Kearns. Mr. Kearns, I believe, is on the, on the line. So would it be okay, council, if we let Eric respond to that?
Any objection from council?
Look at the city camp, the city attorney.
Chief, would you like to respond to any of those questions?
Yes, sir. Ms. Van Hook, as far as cure the violent youth solutions, we have had staff looking at those initiatives. Especially out of Durham and others across the state, staff has made recommendations that we hold on there until. Staff has made recommendations that we hold on there until Chief Austin, the new chief, that will be in office starting September 27th. A lot of those programs are county health-led programs that we have noticed with police involvement, but not led by the police. We need community members to step up there in those leadership roles. So as a staff, we have started, we're looking at them. We're not at a point to make recommendations this time. What we're finding out again that their county health department-led, community-led, with some police involvement. So we understand that we gotta have enforcement efforts and we need other community involvement to help those core roots of causing violence and issues within our community. And that will take others within the community and the county to help get those programs off and going for the, for the county and the city.
Thank you, chief. Do I know the Western Electric Plan as referenced is available on the city of Burlington website. Manager Watkins, if you'd be available to forward that document, which is public record and publicly available on the website. And a huge thank you to the American Institute of Architects for their grant that helped us facilitate a public engagement process where residents around the Western Electric facility were able to come onto the site and help shape that vision in a way that best serves the community. So very public process all throughout that. Happy to share that plan.
Pardon regarding that. I mean, how, how, how many, how many times have we taken tours through there in the last three, four months? I mean, we've, we've put an enormous amount of people through that property to get them educated on what its potential is. Obviously trying to, trying to come up with a solution for that. But how many, how many site visits do you think we've had?
Yes, sir. Also available, I think, to answer that.
Yeah. Yes, sir. We've, in, sort of carrying out the plan, so it's a living document. We continue to look at it. We continue to use that as our guideline. And as, as you've referenced, Councilmember Butler, we've had seven or eight groups through there, community leaders, business leaders, healthcare industry leaders, trying to take a look at the building to kind of keep it on the forefront of as, as many minds as possible across our community and even folks that don't live in our community. I know that Mr. Bishop has also referred probably half a dozen private developers to the owner of the property. Again, we don't own the property. It's owned privately. I know he's also referred, like I said, half a dozen folks to, to look at the property in addition to what we have been doing. And we've been trying to, right, just keep spreading the message and keep getting additional ideas. As, as you've mentioned, keep getting additional ideas added to the mix. So at some point we'll strike on some things that work. But at this moment in time, we're relying on the, the private market and the private sector. And we're hopeful that at some point, you know, more people seeing that, positive things happening in the area, there'll be some interest and momentum going forward.
And, and we've also had some pretty healthy engagement with elected officials across the county and state as well, looking at that site to try to get some momentum, which I think we have a little traction. It's just a matter of, you know, trying to get something accomplished, completed.
And honestly, the, the, the ARPA money, the, the, the beauty of the ARPA funds that I think most larger communities across the state is beginning to realize is that the concept is to leverage those funds with other organizations, whether it's the city and the county, whether it's the city and the state, where actually it can actually be from individual legislators to get the biggest bang for the dollar. And that, I think, is something that has to be, I'm sure Peter is always thinking about this, is, you know, to, to get the, the best project we can. I think Peter, and Peter may need to speak to this about Western Electric Site is for the, the developer, the first thing the developer is going to ask is, is about the environmental status of it, let's be honest. And how that might impact whatever project they might be considering. And I know we're still working on that. That's why the previous site that Mr. Graves mentioned across the street, which is privately owned, is also somewhat quite attractive for certain types of development because to my knowledge, there are not nearly as many environmental concerns on that site. But Peter, you may want to pick up on that.
Yes, certainly. Thank you, Councilmember Owen and, and others for this discussion. And there certainly is, there's a federal process that this property is going through for cleanup. We have several benefits to this property versus other potential environmentally impacted properties in that the United States Army and thus the federal government through the federal budget process is the responsible party for the most significant environmental contamination on the site, which is subsurface beneath the ground. And there's a, a lot of monitoring wells and vapor intrusion devices, both onsite and offsite, that are measuring the impacts that those contaminants can have. And we're very confident that they're, they're contained on the site. And we are working closely with the property owner, with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, US Army Environmental Command and other federal agencies through the, the federal cleanup process for this property. So we, we have a good understanding of what constituents are on the site and where they are. And the process right now is identifying the best, safest way to remediate those constituents, get them off the site so that we can get some more activity on the property and get other parts of the property that are more impacted than others available for sale or for lease through this ownership. So as, as you've mentioned, it's a very long and challenging process. I think we'd all like to see it go a little bit faster because when you, when you start to, you know, fix the best house on the block, the rest of the block gets better. And certainly that's the city's long-term approach with this property and with the property owner is to get it to a state of understanding and, and, and knowing what's there. So getting rid of that uncertainty and then moving forward with, with cleaning it up and, and helping it shine like it used to in the neighborhood.
And, and Peter, I think the, one of the key things that Peter said there is that with the contracts, with really federal contracts involving that particular site, that as we understand it, it goes back to the army or the federal government in terms of, of cleanup responsibility. Unfortunately, that's also a lot of red tape with that. I, I wish that wasn't the case. But I, I think most people are going to want to have a clean bill of health before they go in there and build, realizing that they don't want to build on something that could have potential issues, environmental issues at a later time. But also hard mention one comment, Ms. Van Hook, I think it's really important, privately owned piece of property now too. So, you know, the city is sort of got to be in a leveraging period there somehow. But, but it is a privately owned piece of property when, and that's, that's really important for all of us to remember.
This is our public comment period. If anyone else wishes to speak, we ask to use the raise hand feature in Zoom or star nine if you're joining us via phone. I don't see any additional requests, so this time we will move on to city council comments. Any city council comments this evening?
Mayor, I've got one comment, one, one item I want to bring to everyone's attention. But first of all, I want to really thank city staff and the BPD for National Night Out, the event that we had last week. You know, in spite of the cancellation and rescheduling, in my opinion, it was probably one of the best that we have had. I really appreciate all the work that went into that and the community hosts to have to reschedule that. That was no small undertaking. You know, it was really good to get to interact with various groups. And, and the dialogue, I think, was very informative. For, for anybody that has not, I would encourage you to visit the Dream Center, see what CDB job dollars can do, the CDBG Fund. And I saw Peter over there when I was there and took a tour and, and spent some time with, with those folks and it was wonderful. But on a similar subject, I got to spend a lot of time with, we went to five or six locations and spent some time at the residence of MacIntosh to the lake. And there were really two key takeaways from that visit that I, I want to bring to council's attention. I believe that we need to, to revisit one item. But in March of 2020, I think it was March 17th, it, it was, I went back and pulled the minutes. We had an item on our consent agenda to, to stripe their main thoroughfare through the community. It was on the consent agenda and approved Bonner Bridge, Engle Dairy Road, Lock Ridge, and then some, some markings on Danbrook. So, you know, that was on the consent agenda, but still hasn't been done. And in doing a little research and talking with City Manager Watkins, we, we removed that as a line item as we were trying to get our budget in line. And I think we need to revisit that for, for two reasons. One is I was of the belief when that was on the consent agenda that it was going to be done, it was going to be accomplished. And I think if, if something is going to be moving forward, I believe if something's going to be budget constrained and on the consent agenda, it would probably be best for all parties if it was spelled out that, that pending, it was pending budget. But they've had some pretty rapid growth out in that area and, and some of it, quite honestly, is city-induced with some of the rezoning that we've done, apartments that have gone in and then just the natural boom that everyone's experienced with housing. They, they're, you know, really trying to keep their hands on, on traffic and speed. And I think what I noticed most in, in talking with a few of them, the, the width of that road out there is so wide, the main thoroughfare, the main artery, that it lends itself to speeding by nature because it has no striping. And it, it, it just, your speed will get away from you before you even know it. But their inquiry was to why this has not been done and, and I agree. So I, I would like to see us go ahead and move forward that even if it was a budget amendment, simply because it has now gone through two budget cycles and, and still hasn't been put in there. And with the rapid growth in that area, I don't know what, what they're, what they look like from a population standpoint, but just a simple math would tell me they're probably six, seven, eight percent of our population there. I mean, it's a big, big area over there. And the other piece that I learned, the other takeaway is we've looked at some ingress egress options for them because of traffic coming out onto University Drive, that, that being their major, you know, point of entry and exit. And with those apartments, we did, we were very successful reworking some things there. And we looked at, and city staff did a wonderful job at Greason Lane and what we could do on the backside. I, I think the, the homeowners over there and their HOA may have a couple of alternatives or at least some discussion points. And I do believe that we should try to, to get with that group and kind of get some feedback as to what they think would be best for their area. And I've chatted with Nolan about that briefly, but the striping being primary. And then obviously, as we look at another entry and exit into their community to facilitate the traffic conditions that are going to be forthcoming, maybe have some dialogue with him about what is best and, and, and come to some consensus on it. So anyway, like to get everybody's thoughts on, on that, specifically the striping.
Thank you, Councilmember Butler, for bringing that to our attention. Councilmembers, would you like to see a discussion on September 20th work session regarding some of those items? Now, staff already has some items prepared on them.
Well, to that point, I think also to Jim's point, the, the growth out there and, and, and first of all, let me say this, I'm not trying to, to blow his horn. But MacIntosh to the Lake got off to a great start and then came the stock market crash. Councilmember Bob Ward was our attorney at that time. And as a result of wonderful legal work in terms of bonding, that community was saved. Bob, I think, to be very frank with you, in terms of the roadways and so forth that we have now. And I, I, I can't tell you how, what a wonderful job Bob did with that. But with that being said, it appears now, if you, if you drive out there, that the substantial growth is to the west of, on MacIntosh to the Lake. The question now is going to be is, do we, and how do we work with DOT? Because there's people who live there who work here, but there's people who live there who work maybe to the east, but also to the west. I would imagine there's going to be some people on that western end, and I don't know if you've talked to any of them with Jim or not, that had rather go out that way to get on 40, to go, to go west, to, to whether it's Winston or Greensboro or wherever it may be. But we had talked one time about a, a road coming back, I think, from the, sort of the southern part of it, back to, technically back into University Drive, I think, which would have been really from the eastern part of the complex. And I'm not so sure that's the way it ought to go. I mean, it might be now with the growth. It maybe should go the other way, quite frankly.
Well, I think, I think that's just something that we need to have dialogue with, with that area. The, the, you know, their board's very engaged and, and they've got, you know, even, even satellite community boards to, to give broad representation. So they're very well organized. But, you know, we've, we've, we're, as a city, we're directly benefiting from their growth and, and the build out over there. And I, I'm just concerned about safety, the number of residents that are over there. And, you know, I think that was a little gray area on that consent agenda where they were under the belief that because it was on the consent agenda and it was approved that, that, that striping issue is going to be handled. And quite honestly, I was too. So both those items are important. And I think, you know, we should try to see if we could facilitate what's already been approved. We just need to allocate the money to do that and, and then work on that bigger project as to Harold's point to see if, if that access to 40 and, and that direction would be more feasible and beneficial for their community. And I, I'm sure there's a solution there. We just need to get everybody together and figure out what it is.
Follow up on that gem if you would. How about just putting it on the next work, work session for September? And, you know, with some proposals to move forward, I agree.
And Nolan, if you could, if you could make sure, give us some information about what was, what was involved in the striping proposal? In terms of was, you know, on the street levels itself and, and, and how that was being proposed, I'd appreciate it.
We can do that.
All right. So just clarification, we'll include the striping and an update on Greason Road and that connection or any other connections west or east there on the September 20th work session. Thank you, Councilmember Butler, for bringing that to our attention. And those National Night Out parties are always a wonderful way to get a read on the community and let community members bring up issues to council members. I know Councilmember Butler and I both enjoyed going around the community. I think we, when combined, we're able to make it to every single party. But we, we tried our best. I know city staff were out there as well. So if they had any.
The best tamales I've ever had.
There was a lot of good food out there. People were bringing out their A-game after skipping last year. So despite the hot weather, it was a wonderful event. Again, we thank everyone who helped participate, right down to those community organizers in each of the neighborhoods. They really are the lifeblood of that event in helping gather their residents on cul-de-sacs and parking lots, apartments, HOAs, everywhere around the community, front porches. And so we appreciate their dedication. Any residents who are interested in helping with National Night Out, it is always the first Tuesday in August. And folks can put on their calendar now and check up more information on the city of Burlington's website and through Burlington Police Department.
Just on a lighter note, Mayor, that in terms of the, from the meteorology aspect of the postponement the first week, week before, just to, to reference that, we, we have a, a, a staff person on board who has a doctorate in meteorologist and his name is Anthony Lawls, Dr. Anthony Lawls, an honorary degree after making decisions on probably at least 3,000 youth athletic events, whether it was going to rain or not and before you cancel it. So his, when I first came here in 1975, his comment was, you don't cancel anything till it starts raining. So maybe for the police going forward, maybe that's something we need to consider.
An August 3rd date really did end up being a beautiful evening to be outside. So, but things worked out in the end.
Eric, no, no, no offense, Eric.
I was at the beach and had to rely on my assistant chiefs, and they made the best decision with the information they had.
Any other council comments? I have two other items I want to, one, remind folks that next Friday, August 27th, is National, or not National Night Out, Fourth Friday in downtown Burlington. That is the continuation of our Fourth Friday events in downtown. We invite folks to come on out, support local businesses and our downtown. And then lastly, all important, the COVID pandemic is not over. We're continuing to ask residents to pitch in and practice the three Ws to help our community get through this. This is a critical time. Our community is, we're seeing the Delta variant cases grow in our community. And Cone Health is asking all residents, business owners, and individuals to pitch in, practice those three Ws of wash, wait, and wear those masks that do work. Everyone's participation is going to help our community make it through this. So we appreciate that. And if you haven't gotten vaccinated, get vaccinated. All those steps help our community to overcome this pandemic. So, any other council comments? Well, as my awareness that our city attorney has a request for our council.
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor and Council. At this time, I would request that the city council go into a closed Zoom session pursuant to NCGS 143-318114 and North Carolina General Statute 166A-1924G to discuss matters related to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the city, including potential economic development incentives that may be offered by the city council. I would ask that the council, there be a motion to that effect, a second and a vote, Mr. Mayor.
I hear a motion.
I might get motion there.
I hear a second.
Second.
Motion to enter closed session made by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the closed session motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise. All those opposed? Motion is passed, and that's myself, Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Council will now enter a closed session. We will return to this Zoom session when that closed session has concluded. And at that point, conclude our meeting for the evening. Council members, the closed session information has been provided to you in email. We will see you in there in just a moment.
Hey Scott, I sent you a text message.
I don't have access to that. You have to get with Morgan. She has the closed session information.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, Scott, we are back. If I get host privileges. Or Beverly.
Hello. I'm here, but I don't have any privileges.
Okay, looks like. There you go. We'll go ahead and as soon as we've got.
We're bringing them in right now, sir.
Cool, as long as we get two of them in, we can do a final motion. All right, we got Jim, we got Bob. Get their video. As we get co-host status set up.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, we got Quorum. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
With pleasure.
Motion to adjourn made by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Butler. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed. City Council is now adjourned. We will see everyone in September. Take care.
All right. Miss. Oh, well. All right about that, y'all.
Do you want me to restate for the record?
Yeah, please do, if you will.
Motion to adjourn was made by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Butler. It was approved by unanimous vote of myself, Councilmember Ward, Councilmember Butler. City Council is now adjourned until our September meeting. So thank you, everyone. Hope you have a good evening.
Good night.